0601, we're a little behind here. Dave Hoysington, Tyler Ridge, he's requesting preliminary approval. Okay, you have things for us?
Yeah.
Well, we can share.
Do you have one?
We'll give the one that is. Okay.
We had preliminary approval on this once.
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Dave Hoysington. I'm here to talk about the Tyler Ridge subdivision. We did preliminary approval before contingent on a multitude of things. The longest, the thing that took the longest was the Health Department. And I think, I know Steve Pearson was given a copy of the papers that I received, and I've got a copy of the page from Mr. Hammer in there. The front letter there tells basically what's been done to this point, a lot more than was when I was here before. And it also has the remaining work that needs to be done. Basically, just finish the road, put in water and electric, things like that. And like I said, I had preliminary approval before, but it was over a year ago by the time I got through the Health Department.
Okay. There was a long memo with all five lots, six lots described by Mr. Hammer.
Yes.
And there were things, I had another memo here someplace. Let me get my papers. There was request for more information, I think, from Mr. Hammer. Did you get that? Wasn't there a request for more information from him?
I don't think he requested more from me this time.
From what, I'm talking about a memo that I got in this thing.
Yeah, that was from May.
That was from May.
And then this letter here is August.
Okay, so that was, all those things have been taken care of?
Yeah. According to this, all the lots are deemed suitable for a, for some sort of, for some sort of septic system onsite.
Township trustees and all those things.
Yeah, that's an old letter. The only person I couldn't get hold of, I called the Sheriff's Department three times this week, and I couldn't catch up with the trustees again, or the Plains Volunteer Fire Chief. But he was at the township board, township road meeting when I was there before. And he saw the plat and stuff has not changed since all these people originally approved it and accepted it.
Okay. Did any, you have any questions here?
I have a question about the remaining work to be done after approval on selling the lots.
Right.
Number four, at what point do you have to renew the permit with O. dot?
Well, all I have to do is present it back to them. They approved it once, but there again, it was good for a year, and that's just a bore from the other side of the highway underneath. They approved it before, nothing's changed, there's no reason why they won't. He just said they have to just look at the data again and update it.
On those lots that are only partially suitable for sewage, otherwise they won't take a leach bed or?
Yeah, the one, I believe it's only Lot 5 that he said would be, well, Lot 5 is, he says unsuitable for a standard septic, but apparently nothing's suitable for a standard septic anymore, so it would have to be a mound system or whatever.
Right.
And that, yeah, that's gonna have to be taken into account when somebody builds a house there, from what I understand.
Yeah, I think we're going, because now that the Health Department's changed their methodology and their view of lots located outside of a sewer system, I'm curious as to, how's that gonna be noticed, or that the person buying the land knows it up before they buy the land?
Yes, they will.
I don't know if it's in the deed or the plat.
He did reference.
Some of those mound systems can get a lot more pricing than a septic system.
Right.
And add four or five plus $1,000 to your cost of where we want you there, maybe that thing's undoable for you.
Well, there's two things, I can address that. The first is, yeah, Mr. Hammer did say we would have to have something on the plat, on the final plat stating that, stating that, that it might not be suitable. And the only one seems to be a problem, and he said based on the information, apparently one of the test holes was not exactly where, the distance from, the reports didn't show all the information on it, but he said the lot was found to be suitable for a septic system. So it might have, the person who's doing it, who's building on that lot may have to provide some more information. But I would tell them at the beginning, if, when they buy a lot, that they're gonna have to research it. And I, that Lot 5, if it comes to, just on that lot, I can reduce the price enough to help somebody.
Sure.
You know, I just wanna get.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that, since we're just, this is just something that's new this year.
Right.
Is there, that we get into a common methodology with the Health Department.
Sure.
Of how we let the buyer, potential buyers know. So if you're saying the Health Department's recommending that be on the final plat, that's fine with me.
And then also, the contract will be contingent on them having time to, because they have to take their house plan, the size, exactly where it's gonna be on the lot and all that, and then they'll design a septic for it, so they'd have to do that step anyway before they finalize the.
Well, I was just thinking of it in the context that there's sometimes people do buy lots planning to build, but they can't sell there, so it waits a while, then something else changes. Then they decide, well, I think I'll sell that lot, and then you're not involved anymore.
Right, well, yeah, I can't, I can't speak to that.
So that's where it has to be on down there, if somebody doesn't build and do it suitably.
Yeah.
That some other future buyer knows.
Well, that could go either way too, because there could be some new system that's cheaper.
Oh, yeah.
So it could, it's them taking a chance, but I can't, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Oops. He's seeking preliminary approval.
You calling for a move?
I need, you have to tell me what you wanna do, I can't do it.
Okay, then move approval of 0601, preliminary approval.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
Any more discussion? Yeah.
But I'd like to add to it that provided that the original conditions for the original preliminary approval still apply, because we don't have anything yet for the township trustees.
Is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Two seconds.
I did.
With that, okay, yes, go ahead.
Do you look at this towards an ex, a request for extension time on your original preliminary approval, or is this a whole new application?
It's the same number of lots.
Yeah, no, none of that's changed from last year.
When was the approval first written?
Case number 0601.
0601. Very early.
I guess it doesn't make really any difference.
Another preliminary application.
Oh.
I'm more concerned with time than a fee. I'll pay a fee if we expedite.
What sounds like me.
Well, that's it though.
Wait a minute, if we're gonna negotiate, maybe I won't.
What difference, isn't, would it be just the difference in the payment and the fee?
Um, well, actually it'd be a little less, I think, because the original proposal was the 10 or 12 lots, you know, $500 plus $30 a lot. This is only six lots, it'd be less than last time.
I'm not sure we got to the, this point with the 10 lot, did we? I think that's the same plat.
I know that it was preliminary, preliminary application fee the last time, I'm looking at, see what's the number of lots.
I think it was the same plat. I think we didn't get to this stage with the beginning plat. I could be wrong.
Which way is faster to do it all, just extend it and do it over?
Well, there's a difference of opinions here.
Time wise, time to do it.
Mm-hmm.
I think the applicant's happy that's fine.
I was thinking it was $50, not $500.
Okay, are we ready to vote yet?
Because we can't tell us when you extended it, right?
Pardon me?
You can't tell us when you approved it, because if it was only a couple of months, I don't mind you missing that extent, but if it was expired six months ago, I mean.
I mean, you've got case file 0601.
If it's 0601, it had to have been over, I mean, it's.
Early in '06.
It would have to have been early in '06, one of the first meetings, early meetings, when it first was given the number and came to us. Now, when we request, when we gave preliminary approval, does not necessarily mean that first time we saw it, so, I don't know, we don't, we have a, we don't have a file out here on him. Yeah, okay, she does. Here, can we tell here? Let's see, we wanna go back further, this is early. This is December 21, '05. He received, sent the application in then. All these materials back here were submitted in '05, but he didn't, it didn't become a case until '06. So you can't count that. Here we have, he came in, oh, 2005 with a proposal. This has to be a typo, because it must have been January 5, 2006, he came, 0601, it was a proposed subdivision, and he came to talk about it then, I think, at that point. 21, this is a minute. He said there were only six lots in the subdivision, and there it must have moved, just tabled the case, it was tabled at that first meeting in January. And it sits until a later commission meeting. I can't stand this echo I keep hearing, it's time to create it, but he did have six lots for that, for that time.
Yeah, I had a six.
Yeah. I don't know when the next one was. This also is '05, I haven't placed it says '06 is back here. Would there be another flat? I know he came back several times. I know you came back several times. But all I have here is the, when it was tabled, that first time he came in '06, when you'd cut the number of lots back, and you came to discuss it, and we didn't, there was information needed, so it was tabled. So, I don't know what happened after January, but there's nothing else in there.
Got an April date that being forwarded to the Health Department.
April of '06? So hadn't had anything done to it? What did it say? Didn't say it was approved there?
No, just looking at that August.
Those were the early ones, yeah.
Why don't we do it as a new preliminary approval, today? To give it a year for today to get funding approval.
What does anybody think about that?
At this point, it seems to be the most rational.
Yeah, because we don't know what date it was. All right, is that a motion?
That's a motion, let's.
Is there a second?
Sir?
We have preliminary approval as of today, whatever it is, September the 7th, 6th.
6th, that's nice.
Yeah.
Are there any other discussion on that? Is that satisfactory to you?
That's fine.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's what we're doing. We're doing.
Thank you.
The next case is 0708, it's Lance Ref. Yeah.
Ooh, the big one. Can I see?
Yeah, I can see. The one.
Hi, my name is Lance Ref with University Estates. Suffering from laryngitis, so bear with me, I put some high notes and low notes in here. Because of the amount of material that I wanted to cover today, I would appreciate it if I could just go through the whole thing, and then we'll open it up to discussion at one time, because I could answer some of your questions as I go on. Today, I've chosen to bring four projects before you, that I will be following up on a final October 4. As you know, this is a very large project, and many of the things we will talk about are gonna be related to these projects. A lot of the things we've talked about in the past, and you've approved, you know, I won't go through all that stuff each time we talk about these individual projects. Again, the reason why I'm coming in two steps for the final is, that gives you 30 days to review all this and think about all the everything, so when I come back for the final with all the detailed information, you know, some of the questions and stuff that you have, I will have already been able to incorporate into the presentation. My plan is to come back October 4 for the final. I invited the Shade Tree Commission out last week, and they come out and I showed them all these projects, and I will meet with them tonight. Yesterday, I went to the staff meeting of the, of the mayor and Ray's whole staff, and presented all this to them, so they would also have at least 30 days to begin, you know, reviewing a lot of the details on water and sanitary and storm. I guess one important point that I would like to make is the timeline that we need to try to follow to get all these projects through by the end of the year. We're at a point now with the scheduling, you know, we have Grand Vista approved, we're waiting on the land development section to be approved by Ray, and that's nearing completion. Part of the reason we wanna get all four of these projects going is that, so we can coordinate the earthwork, and obviously makes it cost effective, and the use of Greenville, Greenview Lane is incorporated in that plan, so we wanna be able to use that, so then we can pave it for the final project on Lots 4 and 5. One of the other things too, is by tying all this together, it's gonna be less disruptive on the neighbors that we have up there now. You know, the residents, we can get all this earth moving done, hopefully over the winter and through the first part of the spring, obviously weather dependent, but that'll get a lot of that stuff out of the way, so we can not inconvenience them anymore than we have to. To do this, we will need a new plat for the residential part. We have some residential and additional Lot 4, and Armage Road will be part of the new plat, and I will pass that out in a minute. We will have to vacate Armage Road at the same time. If you look at the timeline, we need to make this happen, I talked about September 5 of the city meeting with the administrative staff, today's meeting, Tree Commission tonight, and then on the 19th, I go to the Disabilities Commission. In order to make your October 4 meeting, I have to have all the final packages into Steve on September 26, which I think is 10 days or 11 days, whatever the requirement is, to make the agenda for the 4th. So I've got a lot of work to do in the next, you know, not quite 30 days. One thing that I would ask you to consider thinking about now is, the way the system works, if I come to you on the 4th for approval, you have the option of a public hearing, okay? If we choose to have that public hearing, that adds another 20 to 25 days onto the process. And the reason I bring that up is because if you approve without the public hearing, the very next thing the city council does is has a public hearing at their committee meeting. So we would, you know, obviously have a public hearing that people could voice any concerns they had. If that would flow through, then council could have their public hearing on the 22nd of October, then starting November through December 3, we could have the readings, the three readings. Then you have a 30-day waiting period for an ordinance to pass. At that time, we would pass the new plat and vacate the old Armage Road, so that on the same day, you know, we do away with an old road and have a new road. And I think that's the way that has to happen. As we did with Grand Vista, and we got a little earlier start this time with our soil borings and stuff, we hope this all runs together. Certainly by the end of the year, we will have a lot of information to Burgess and Niiples, and if it wouldn't be fully completed for Ray to sign off on the Title 27 land development, it would be very close, and we'd be down to, you know, a few minor details on any one of the projects. So let me start by just pointing out real quick on the, on this map, that you probably didn't tell us, seeing that up here. The plat for Phase 2 is gonna be this area right here. See the two cul-de-sacs, and then the open space here where the water tower is? That will be part of the plat, and then this little section right here will be carved out and become Lot 4B. 4B. And then the other part of the plat is the Armage Road. It has to be platted, and there's a vacating process that council does to vacate the old Armage Road. So here's a quick picture of the plat. Unfortunately, they didn't shade those as dark as they could, but you can see Phase 2 also includes this area there. So Phase 2 is all of this and that. One thing I did mention, and you'll see right here where we plan on putting the clubhouse and some of the founders' cottages, that is already on University Estates Boulevard, and is in plat, the original plat. So we don't have to do anything other than just add that on. The road's already there, the water and sewer area. So that's one thing, I think that falls into subdivision regulations too, that I come through with the plat. The second project is the residential Phase 2 of the single-family lots, which is right here on the big map. And if you look on this map, you're coming up University Estates Boulevard this way, and we propose putting around about here, and we've been in contact with Andy Stone, exchanged several ideas, visited a few in Dublin and Grandville, a couple places like that. So we're working with Andy to design it, and I know you're looking at one in Richmond Avenue, the traffic count obviously is not near as high here, so we won't have as much things to work out. So this will go up, it'll be Broadmore Court, these will be 70-foot lots coming out here. There's 47 of them. This area that, I don't show the loop here, but this is where the water tower is, okay? And that is, is this area right there, you can see the water tower? Now, what I will have to do also, draw on yours, Mayor, is the one line you see is the water line coming off of University Estates Boulevard, and that is right there. So that will be an easement, and then this line right here will be a service road, and it comes off at a 90. That we will put in there for the city crews to get to the water tower, and that'll be a permanent easement there. So those will also be on the plat map. Most of the lots gonna be in the 66 to 70-foot by 150-foot range. Probably our targeted price retail for these will be, for the homesites, will be 160 to 225,000, roughly in that ballpark. One of the surveys, the housing surveys we did originally, mentioned us that we should have several different types of product available. Unfortunately, as we were slow getting going, we couldn't do all that at one time, but now we're getting into that, that we can offer, you know, a little less priced house, more affordable, similar like what we did with High Point Village, and then Grand Vista will be the opposite, will be a higher step up. So we're trying to get into a broader picture of what we can offer. A bond is being figured right now for the price for the roads, and Ray, we talked with Ray yesterday at the meeting, we will have that fairly quickly for him to review. At the time the plat goes through, the bond has to be posted for the roads. So between Ray and I and Burgess and Niiples and our engineer, we will accomplish that probably in the next couple of weeks. All the utilities will be underground, the landscaping, lighting, we will have sidewalks on both sides of the cul-de-sac streets. However, on this main feeder line, because we're not sure what we're gonna do here on this side of the street, we'll probably ask for our bearings that we start off with one side sidewalk on the residential side, just to make sure, you know, when we get farther along, we can always come back in and put a sidewalk if it's necessary. To give you one idea, we have a mock-up of how the water and the sewer and electricity and all that, we presented that yesterday to the city staff, just wanted you to know they are working on that. The next thing I wanna talk about is High Point Village, which is Phase 2 of the villas that we're building now. Presently, we are getting ready to close on Building 5, the rest of the buildings are pretty well sold out, which is 6 through 12. We have the clubhouse open, swimming pool in and all that. So we're taking off from right here is the clubhouse, and let me show you. This shows a cul-de-sac going right up here, and then the road coming on around. Our current plan, after we did the soil stability studies and all that, they're recommending to us, instead of coming out here with a cul-de-sac, the time we got out here, it wasn't sturdy, and we have a little loop road, and put the buildings in this manner. So this present location, or it's probably gonna be one less building than we had in the original drawing a couple of years ago. Again, this is just the, just a black and white utility plant, shows the water lines and where the sand. and where the sand tarry goes and everything. We gave one of those to Ray yesterday. This gives a little better picture overall. The clubhouse is right here, it's completed. And you'll have your turnaround loop road right there. And then it shows Altamont going on down Stone Ridge, comes down to University Estates Boulevard. As with the residential component of this, the villas is also under our architectural review committee. So we control what the materials are used. We'll have a homeowners' association, which is, already has one in place. Again, I said the nine to 12 buildings, I think this picture shows nine. That could increase back up to 12 if the CTL report and Burgess and Naples all agree that we'll work with that number. Again, these are state-approved buildings because there's four to a unit. The road bond is in place for this. All the utilities will continue underground. The landscaping plan that I presented, when I presented this, has been changed a little bit. I've met several times with the tree commission, and they're helping me in choosing the right trees and stuff that we'll go forward with. Project number three is the little strip center that's out front, which is right here. It's where my office is now, the trailers, as it's shown right there on the map. The commercial application package is a, because it's commercial, does not fall under the PUD. So that will be presented to the administrative staff per the regulations. But I wanted to bring it to you today, just to show you how it fits in with the whole project, and we're tying it in. Again, the strip center falls under the master association, so it has to follow the architectural review. This building will be approximately the same level as my office is right now, pad level. We've done that originally, so when you come in University Estates, there's probably a 20 to 25-foot difference between the road and where the pad is, so that you still get a residential feel as much as you can coming in there. It's going to be somewhere around an 18,000-foot square foot building, brick-faced. Units will be anywhere from 1,000 to 2,500 each, probably six units. And- This picture shows two buildings, outbuildings. We're still in the exploratory part of that. This plan here is a little more detailed, shows the storm and stuff. We've resigned to the fact that maybe two won't fit there, so we're looking at a bank, bank-type building on the end here, and doing away with the building over here. One of the questions that was raised at staff meeting yesterday, asked me to take a look at the double entry over here off Armadale Road, if there's another possibility. So we will address that, if we come up with a suitable idea. You know, we're not against that, but we just need to study that. The service road will run along behind it. I have a retaining wall, and then it'll go fairly, fairly quickly from the retaining wall, and this is all rock face cliff right here, fairly quickly go up to there, and then you'll start in Grand Vista. We plan on stair-stepping that up as much as we can, and putting plantings across there, which I've already talked with the shade tree commission about that. The parking will be in the front of the building, and then the service road in the back. If for some reason we don't meet the requirements for parking, which at this point we do, we also own the old hut and building over here. Some of the fill from there would probably have to go there, so we've always got the option for employee parking, delivery parking, or stuff like that over there. So again, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so you would know that that project is moving forward. And the last project I wanted to bring for you is the apartment complex. And we've talked about this for years, and I've showed you on the map that it exists right here. And the Greenview Road that we just vacated, we vacated because we didn't think this thing would ever happen quick. As soon as you do something like that, the opposite happens. So here we are. And so that's where that project is. They're going to do that in the three phases, which this being the phase on Lot 5, Phase 1 would be this plus the clubhouse area. So if you can picture that, this is University Estates Boulevard, and this is the vacated easement of Greenview. So their Phase 1 would be up here in the clubhouse area, and come in with Phase 2, and then probably down the road in the third year would be this area here, which sits right here that I told you on the plat, would be Lot 4B, is why we're dedicating that. So this gives you kind of a rough idea of what it's going to look like. Originally, I told you earlier that we want to leave Greenview as an easement, the way we're using it now. And I think it's imperative to do that until these get to a point that, you know, then it becomes obvious we have to build that road. But if we can get as much of the earthwork done for this project and the other three, you know, say by June or July of next year, you know, we will have done most of the heavy hauling on this road. So that's the reason behind that. So far, the name of the project is still being tinkered with, where we're leaning toward campus view. It's going to offer housing opportunities in a planned and supervised environment with a written code of conduct. It also will be a member of the University Estates Master Association, and has to go before the Architectural Review Board on all their plans for construction. One minor lot split will be involved, and it's this area right here where my pointer is, and it's 4/10ths of an acre right there, which minor lot splits are done administratively. And that's just to give us the corner area there that make room for the detention basins and the, probably the edge of the park, or the clubhouse. The property is already zoned, R3, when we originally went through zoning, so that's been taken care of. Phase 1, we're looking at completion date of the fall of 2008. Phase 2 will be the fall of 2009. And Phase 3, if everything keeps on a good schedule, will be the fall of 2010. There'll be a total of 14 three-story buildings in the common area, which features the pool and the clubhouse. They'll have some basketball courts and sand volleyball courts scattered through the project. The total site, including Lot 4B, will be around 23 acres. In Phase 1, there'll be three buildings. As you can see, I said Phase 1 was right there. Roughly 62 units. Phase 2 will be seven buildings, which is this area right here, that'll be 148 units. And Phase 3 would be four buildings right here, and roughly 92 units, for a total of 292 units. Again, these are, because these are large buildings, will be state-inspected and permitted. There'll be three-story buildings. There'll be a few of them that will be, because of terrain, will have, part of the basement will be walkout. So there'll be two, three, and four-bedroom units. They'll all have individual bathrooms, plus the whole unit has a kitchen, closets, washer and dryer, sprinklers, firearms, fire alarms, smoke alarms. There'll be a minimum of the one per bedroom parking. And it's going to be professionally landscaped. I go before the tree commission tonight, so I'm sure I'll get their input on that tonight. And obviously, it'll be professionally maintained. We also have a full maintenance staff onboard, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, which includes snow removal and the basic maintenance of building. The basic code of conduct will be signed by every resident, and they will also sign a thing that says that they are part of the homeowners' association, so they know our rules for the subdivision. The primary entrance for the project will be University Estates Boulevard, and then down in Greenview. Secondary emergency type exit is always the other way out on Armadale Road, at the bottom of the hill. One of the things that's, right here in the clubhouse, is a central mailbox system. So that basically encourages everyone to use the main entrance, so they can talk to a male on a daily basis. All the utilities will be sourced from University Estates Boulevard, which they're all right there at the intersection. And the plan that I gave the city, which is just from here, is the, pretty much gives you where all the storm and water and all that is. And Nick Carr has that, and he will be reviewing that. One of the things we're still looking at is the bus service. If it's any way possible, we'd like to explore the Athens transit system, because, you know, once we get more population out there, they're probably, they're going to be coming out there anyways. So if we can incorporate some kind of schedule with them, up their ridership, which obviously ups their revenue, that's the first option I think we should take. Apartment complex also will have access to the bike path. Let me show you on this one. As you come out of there, the bike path is right here, coming down between Grand Vista and the apartments, and goes all the way around. And you can get on Armadale Road and go with the bike path on the other way. And we also have the eight-foot bike path going all the way through the project. So we'll have access to that. I think this is going to be an attractive and well-managed apartment complex. It's in keeping with a lot of the things that were in the Athens comprehensive plan, and I think it's just a great addition, particularly this location for the community. As I originally stated, today's purpose was to give you some advanced information on what we plan on coming back on October 4th with. So that we can meet this very aggressive schedule, my main goal is to keep all my guys working this winter. And to do that, I've got to have these things approved, so that, so I don't have to lay off, you know, 100 and some people. I guess the best thing, I don't think I've missed anything, so if you've got questions to build up through my presentation, maybe I can help you now, or else I can at least get you an answer the next time around.
Why do you have a university view? I thought you said campus view. Aren't we getting a little too many universities and campuses around? I would say, I would think that the emergency people would be kind of balking at some of that. I thought that was a-
No, I thought you might have brought that up.
And my other favorite thing I want to ask you is, who's going to live in those apartments right there? For what group of people are you building those?
Obviously, or obviously, we cannot control-
I know, but it looks like a student thing to me.
It's geared more towards students and graduate students.
Okay. You know, I have always been disappointed at this. In the beginning, you had a place there where you were going to have low-income people house, and they sort of fell by the wayside. And you know, that's one of my favorite topics here, because I'm on the Metropolitan Housing Authority also. And I just came from a meeting from there. We always need money and housing for people with low income, which is not necessarily people, I mean, our schoolteachers are low-income, and firemen are low-income, and policemen are low-income, and a lot of people are low-income.
I think the project you are referring to was down in this area.
Yeah, and it got kind of lost in the shuffle, didn't it?
At this point in time, you know, we haven't completely planned, made our plans for areas back here and here. Again, what I was saying was, our housing study said that we need to have various levels. Now, to completely identify those various levels, we haven't got to that point yet. But-
Well, that's, I would sort of like you to see, to get to that level possibly with all that land up there. I don't have, but do you want to ask them something?
What else?
On the, I can't remember if it's two or three, High Point, Phase 2?
Phase 2.
The schematic that you had on it still had Stone Ridge Road. I thought we deplotted that last year.
Yeah, I guess.
And shows the, going past the, into the next commercial lot with the road. So assuming, we have to assume your lot really ends where the lot ends. So, right, so therefore, because the rest of that road doesn't exist, right?
It hasn't been built, no.
Right, so we would need-
From here, it hasn't been built.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. And you're only going to build it to the end of that Phase 2.
It's our plan to, that's why we platted the bond, is to take that all the way down.
See, we're dealing with two different pieces of property. Have to think about that. But I was thinking that, you're planning though to build Altamont all the way to its end?
Yeah.
Then, on that next lot. Okay. But I thought Stone Ridge was not in the plat right now. Are you replating it too?
We will replat it.
Well, if you're not going to build it now, we need a cul-de-sac or something for people to turn around, is my point, somewhere.
I think we put a hammerhead right here.
Just to need, so the person that goes that way has a way to turn around the cul-de-sac, is the point of us.
I will check that.
It's going all the way back down to University Estates. That's all. And it may just be that by the time you get the phase done, it's going to be eliminated because the next project's gone. You know? But technically, from my standpoint, yeah, we need, I like it when the lot, you know, PUD ends and it shows, you're either going to do it one way or the other. Either you want to do a cul-de-sac so people can turn around, or you're going to continue all the way, and it's going to move all the way down to University Estates Boulevard. But that's-
I know we addressed that there.
Other commercial lots sold, that's a lot of money to spend to-
I know that's been addressed.
Get away from not doing a cul-de-sac, which is a lot cheaper.
Yeah, we talked about that on the other end yesterday, Lance.
That's why I didn't make sure where. That was brought up here too.
Right.
And right at the end of the-
See, I can't remember all these numbers, so I never remember which one.
This is Broadmore.
Yeah.
For the residential. We're going to put a temporary turnaround here.
Right.
Because we're not taking that route on now.
Right. Now, on the water tower, since you got that one up, the water tower's located there. You're going to do a service road into the, are you plating the water tower location?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the road and with an easement, you know?
Yeah, but that's a service road rather than a, you explained, described it as.
Well, right. That'll come right here. And then this is just a protection easement, right? 20 feet, whatever it's called.
Oh, right. Right. So we have enough room to go in and dig if there's ever water right there. And the other one is-
And then the water tower is fenced.
Right.
And so that whole unit becomes part of the plat. I may have to explain it that way, but that's- I maybe haven't explained it that way, but it's- That's a fenced area already, so we're just adding the road.
Right.
Right now, we've got a temporary gravel road for guys to get up there, but we won't bring it in, nine and three up there.
But that water tower will be in part of the plat and a lot, and all the other stuff. Okay. Is, are you phasing that at all? You're gonna do it all at once?
Do it all once.
Okay. Is it, you've got, how many lots there are, the other seventy-some?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven? Oh, okay. Forty-seven, okay. Somehow, it just looks more than that, okay. And then, the apartment one you have, is it, I'm trying to get it located in my mind, because you were saying four A was, you need a little chunk off of it. What, is four vacant right now? Is three, where are you putting Grand Vista?
Uh, yeah, no, that's Lot Two.
Lot Two.
Lot Three is green space.
That can be confused until we hear it.
Sit on here, Doc.
Well, what my concern was, is why I was, if you're taking somebody from another lot, I was wanting to make sure it wasn't a lot we'd already approved a PUD on, and that's an alterance to the PUD, and we got another action to do. So that's why I was wanting to make sure there was a lot in between the two.
Right.
As long as there is, we're fine.
Okay. And there's that new part right there.
Right.
So this is Lot Two, and then all this around here is Lot Three, is green space. And then, Lot Four, Five.
Okay, and that was, that was another question, is do we get into a rezoning issue?
No, because when we, when we zoned that on the zoning map, we brought the corner of that zoning over.
You mean, the zoning doesn't run according to the parcels?
No. Not exactly.
All right.
So we'd have road for-
That may be a problem. Anybody else? Anybody else have any questions?
Those are the ones I jotted down as we speed through the presentation.
Do you have anything? Okay.
Yep, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any more cases to discuss, and this was an information thing, was not requiring any action. Our next category is communications. We have communication regarding the station depot, we do. Where'd it go?
Right here.
Well, Peg stole my peg, my pile, and that's why I don't have anything. Okay. What is it they want here? I just saw this. Zoning permit for us to locate the rental office in the building?
It's wanting advice. He wants advice.
Oh, what kind of advice?
Well, there has been a request by the owners of the depot to make that, the rental office of the station.
Yeah, I knew that.
What he was asking was, since it has been before the planning commission has a PUD before, although that was all of the overturning of voters.
By all of them. They're all interested here, aren't they?
Was there anything within the PUD process where the original agreement goes all the way back to, what, 1989 or something?
It goes back to late eighty's.
Before my time.
Yes, before all of that time. We have noted that there was a restriction with respect to any alteration or change in the exterior, you know, of the building had to be approved by the State Historical Society, et cetera. This doesn't have any real remodeling to the building or anything that goes with it, it's just an occupancy use inside.
Well, inside, you can do anything you want inside.
Do we know of any restrictions?
Well, they, did they get approval to put those ramps and things on there a long time ago? That you can do any-
That, that was the last time that they came before the planning commission. And when I started going back through the records, it seemed like it wasn't that long ago, and then I found it was in 1995. So we haven't heard anything from the station project since 95. And right in that same period of time, too, is when they proposed some additional apartment buildings, and so that had to come back through the planning commission. The station itself is a little bit different, because it's privately held. The apartments are on lands leased from the city, but Mr. Tremblay owns the station, and that was part of the agreement, which was part of a, that was a urban renewal project through UDAG, so that was, it was quite a, quite a big process. The last time that any renovations were done, there was historical society review, believe it or not, lighting fixtures, plumbing fixtures, and the design of the ramp, and those were all approved. And then the planning commission approved that, that work on the station. So it's been quite a while now. I have received an application to, for them to move their rental office from the commercial strip area there into the, actually into the train station. Submitted with that, what I did receive was, and you probably have seen these before, even as you come in the hallway here, an occupancy permit that's been approved by the state of Ohio, that the building can be occupied the way it is for, for rental office. And there's another, just a little bit of information in writing from the state that backs up the use, or the occupancy permit, use and occupancy permit. Right now, there's no, there are no requests for any renovations to the buildings. It's simply just be moving furniture and fixtures in. As far as I know, that's what I got with the application, didn't have anything to do with building. I just wanted to make sure that, because I'd heard quite a bit about what the purpose of, or the use of the station should be. It was, as I read through the record, it was for commercial purposes. And I saw that there were a group of people represented by Tom Eslocker, who actually wanted to buy it and put some kind of commercial use in. Pat Sauber wanted to put McDonald's in there, I saw on the record. The only thing I saw in the agreements was, the station will be used for commercial purposes, and it didn't say for rental office, not for rental office, you know.
Well, it's zoned in still, isn't it?
It's still zoned in, the zoning was never changed in that area.
So the residential cannot be manufactured zone, can it?
Um, that's correct. That was taken to referendum, I believe, at the time the project was approved. That zoning down there is all still in, where the apartments are.
Right.
And the station is still zoned in, also.
Is there a rental office gonna take up the entire interior?
It seems like a lot of room for a rental office.
Hmm, I don't-
Or does the application say? Because I know they've used it some for storage, temporary storage, as they've been redoing apartments and such. So I see some pod buildings out in front of it.
Yeah.
Maybe so often, I see, driving by it today, at noon, there's piles of gravel and a semi-truck trailer. There isn't any at least parking that I could see, this time.
Now, there's no information or indication on the application, how much square footage will be associated with the use.
It's not a very big place, actually, you know, it's not that much room in it.
I've been in it one time.
It's, I mean, it's not a huge space, so.
Yeah, you really pretty much go in, and there's kinda like a little room to the right and a little room to the left.
Because that used to be that was open, and one whole end was open, and they closed it in. So the, I think when you look at it, the left-hand side, when it was first built was, where they had express, or their parcels and their trunks and stuff, and they closed it in. But it's never been that big, and I would think if they run a rental place, they might wanna store and stuff, still keep part of it storage, you know.
But you don't find anything, is what it is, what you've read in the commission's files?
The information, total information, probably twice, there's half of it right there.
Is that why, that you had that big pile?
And I can't find anything, you know, that would specifically preclude that he could not use it as a rental office. Although, from looking at minutes of council meetings and things, it was, you know, probably that's not what they were thinking would happen at the time.
Well, they had all these wild ideas about what was in there. There was so much controversy over the whole thing. I mean, it's just, it's just been arguing for years, so.
I did just, today, as I was going through the records, saw an indication that Mr. Bias had said that during the time of the discussion, he was concerned because there was, commercial use in the depot was such a broad term. And he had expressed the fact that it was, you know, very broadly stated, you know, that it would be used for commercial purposes. And I can't find anything where that was ever narrowed back down.
Yeah, well, I think people didn't want it to be a bar, or another bar, or a-
Why not?
I don't know. Or McDonald's. Restaurant, but, you know, and it was, it was too small. It was suggested that it be a hall or a meeting place at the restaurants in the area. The restaurant association used it, and they could rent it out for weddings and stuff, but it's really not-
I know, it was talked about being an office for the chamber of commerce or something.
And they asked the museum, the historical society, if we would want it for a museum, but it's not, I mean, it's just not big enough.
Well, I guess the point to get Steve's question out of the way, I don't know if we need a motion or not. I prefer to have it, personally, because then usually the building is better maintained when you have it tampered with.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be their rental office, the first thing people see when they come, they're probably gonna make it look fairly decent.
Well, and it's commercial, it seems to be.
Yeah, it was commercial.
So, I just make a motion that the planning commission has no objection to the issue.
Very good, I just wanted to make sure I was in compliance with the original approval. It's that some things had to come back to planning commission, some didn't, so that's, that's what that was about.
It's been moving second, and everybody in favor say aye. We're all in favor. I won't see if this creates an uproar.
Yeah, that thing's such a-
I don't know. Well, I do know.
This is kinda ending in a whimper.
Well. Okay, Beacon School parking lot expansion. Okay.
We got more?
He didn't want, he always has to pass stuff out to us.
I'll lead you through the maze here.
I want you to know that I went down and looked at this.
I recently received a complaint that Beacon School had expanded its parking lot without meeting in particular the landscaping regulations. And that, I conducted then an investigation based on a complaint. Did talk quite extensively to Mr. Butch Witham, who's the maintenance supervisor at the site. The project was to try to create a little more parking, because Beacon School has very limited parking. Somewhere back in here, you can, there's some emails about how much they actually have. Let's see. They need approximately 55 spaces to supply their need. Right now, they're using 24 spaces over at Morrison. And, let's see, they only have 19 spaces of their own. They expanded to pick up another nine. So, you know, they are, in their opinion, still really below their parking need. They wanna expand parking as much as they can to try to meet that need, not be so dependent on parking over at Morris. But, I'm back to the beginning here. On the first page, I've just highlighted or pointed a little arrow to what it takes in the zoning code to build a parking lot. And if you go, just jump over to the next column, it says you have to have a landscape plan. So it does reference the landscape ordinance in the zoning code. On the next page, I've got an arrow that points toward the exemption of government properties from the zoning code. But the recent revisions to the code added some phrase there that if you couldn't strictly meet the requirements, you had to supply the planning commission in writing why you couldn't. And so that's the process then I've been helping Beacon School go through. So that's what we're here doing, I've written explanation why they can't. I do have then a copy of the landscape regulations. And what I would like to point out is, go to the next page, 20, 3708 Commercial Institutional Industrial Landscaping. And it talks about landscaping required for new developments, that's one category. Payment replacement greater than 25%, that's category two. Alterations to buildings which increase the floor area by more than 25%, that's category three. And alterations that exceed 50% of the Athens County Auditor's valuation. So there are four categories where landscaping is required. It's my feeling that tree commission looks at expansions of parking lots as new parking lots. But this language is not that specific. You know, you could say, well, it's not a new parking lot, it's an expansion of an old parking lot. So in a way, I'm kinda looking for maybe some impression that you might have about, does it even really need to be landscaped? Is retrofitting landscaping, or landscaping at least of this one little section really required?
I went down and looked at it today. And I don't think it needs landscaping. I've seen, I drove past worth parking lots that are supposedly landscaped, that we told them that they had, they were told they had, and then they really, if that's landscaping, you know, I don't think rocks are landscaping, quite frankly, but it just, I don't see where they could landscape it. There's a fence right up against it, the other people have their fences, a strip of grass. Then where the, used to be the school, you know, that other school. There's a chiropractor now, it used to be, what, you know, river, there, there's bushes and stuff there. There a lot, there are green space over here, and there's one house at the front here with the fence, and then there's, but, I mean, I don't see where you would do the landscaping. It doesn't even show from any place.
Technically speaking, it could get to the point where it's either over 25 cars or over 7,000 square feet of pavement where you're required to have an eight-foot buffer. Well, if they'd had an eight-foot buffer all the way around, they couldn't have created any more parking.
Well, they couldn't have, they'd have to give up parking to do it, because the other people's property is right there on top of them, too.
They didn't expand it by that much, anyway. They only expanded it by 4,900 feet, right?
Right.
Well, the fellow, the fellow, the maintenance man was there, and he showed, he said it was not paved in that section, and when they paved it, they paved it, one, he said that the people in the other house have some, a lot of cats, and the cats were using that as their litter box.
Yeah, those are out-of-town cats, that property's not in the city.
Well, they're out of town. But anyway, I mean, he said, he said it's been better since, and because people didn't want even park there. They could've parked on it, because when they walked in there, it was messy. And this way now, it's, it's, there were cars in there parked when I went in there.
There are trees and bushes and some things around there. It's not that it's completely wide open to the neighbor, it's just that the regulations say you have to have it on your property. They might have to have it on theirs, too.
Well, and part of it, Steve, brings up an interesting question. I think that the code is saying, a 25% expansion of the parking area or more kicks in the landscaping regulations.
It's a-
Well, that's condition two, wasn't it?
Payment, payment replacement of existing parking lots greater than 25%, that's number one.
All pavement.
Yeah, payment of the existing, replacement of the existing lot. So it doesn't talk about expansion.
All they did there was, where it was gravel for fours, they paved it.
Right.
And that's fours, not 25% of 19, that they had, right?
Well, the complainant said that they thought it was a new parking lot. I wasn't looking at it as, I mean, I don't know how, I wasn't looking at it as anything until I got the complaint. So is it an expansion of an existing lot, or simply the pavement of an existing lot?
How do you add a second parking lot? It's all your parking.
It wasn't, that part wasn't paved, it was just before, and they paved it. I mean, it was still their parking lot for four cars, you could put four, they parked cars in there if they wanted to, but they said they felt they didn't like to stomp through the cat litter box.
The other interesting piece in here, too, is that the original parking lot is larger than 7,000 square feet, right?
I think it said 8,100.
Yeah, because if it was less than 7,000 square feet, and they add anything to it, then they have to retrofit the entire parking lot. Because if you read down through paragraph A, "A parking lot that's under 7,000 square feet is expanded by additional parking or vehicle use areas. The requirements for landscaped parking lots over 7,000 square feet shall apply to both the original parking lot and to the area that is being added."
All right, so I guess that's a fifth category, then.
Yeah, so if you have a small- Yeah, so if you have a small parking lot, you don't want to add one space to it.
No, because you're going to have to dig up half the, you're going to do it over and dig up half of it for a tree.
I guess in theory, if you've exceeded the 7,000, you want to add a space or two, you have to go back and completely retrofit.
It looked all right to me. They had two different, the paving one together, and they had the striping done, and they moved the light, and it was...
I don't, where is that, is a condition of when you add to an existing parking lot? Other than the 7,000 square feet?
Yeah, just that one. So, if you had a parking lot under 7,000?
Well, even if you had one over seven and added another 1,000 square feet, it doesn't address it at all.
It doesn't apply.
It's only a little one.
It's only for the little parking lot.
And it's governmental property anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, well...
But they're technically, before we're doing it, they should arrest the planning commission and tell them why they couldn't.
Uh-oh, slapped their hands.
Right. But what I thinking is, to me, I don't know, are these two separate parking lots? It's all one parking lot, I thought. We're already over 7,000, and it doesn't look to me like 3708 addresses expansion of an existing parking lot greater than 7,000 square feet.
Who complained and why? Why should it be? Well, you're going to have to tell me who it was. You're going to tell me who it was, but I mean, I don't see, I mean, there are parking lots that I would complain about, as I said. I went past one, I thought, that looks terrible. But, and it's right out in the road, right in the main street, and it's got, you know, a tree here, and about a mile down, there's another tree and a couple of rocks thrown in, and so, I'm not going to mention any names. But, yeah, I, this looked picky to me when I went in there. I thought this was like, picky, picky. Sorry, I am a picky person, and it's picky to me, so.
I'm under obligation to respond to any complaint that I might...
Well, I understand that, Steve. I'm not criticizing you, I know why you have to do it.
And I don't think this is all that bad either, because the Tree Commission meets tonight, and I might point that out to them, that, because they're in the process now, and it is on their agenda for tonight, they meet in this room at 7 o'clock tonight. They're going through proposed revisions to the landscape ordinance, which you've got to, it's only, it's only four pages. You've got two duplex pages, and that's the extent of landscape ordinance. So, that's actually something on their agenda and something they've been going through for several months. So, I think it'll be good to point it out. For example, these, that extended list of when you have to retrofit, that was a revision from the original landscape ordinance, that wasn't included in the originals. And for example, when everyone saw the expansion of Athens Mall, they tore the front off, did away with the interior corridor, people were saying, well, now they have to landscape that parking lot. Well, they weren't expanding the parking lot, and they were actually diminishing the size of the building, not expanding it. So, legislation was passed to add that section, and when you improve a property greater than 50 percent of its value. That got added in after Athens Mall remodeling. So, maybe this is another example, we need to address existing parking lots if they want to, that are over 7,000, and add to it.
Which was the Athens Mall situation. They added some, they added some parking, at least directly in front of the building, in the areas that was toward that.
But at that time, you know, the cost, well, the cost improvement way exceeded 50 percent of the value.
Right, but in this case, Beacon School, they didn't do anything to the building.
No, didn't do a thing to the building. So, maybe it's something that just needs to be tuned up.
Well, if they just send us a message under 2019...
Part of it, though, is that the amount, if you have to then conform totally to the buffers and everything else, and you already existed, you probably, even your expansion, you might lose parking.
There is a section, I guess rather than look for it and try to find it, it essentially says, "Parking trumps trees." This happened at Kroger's.
Right.
It talks about renovations to a building or if there's expansion of parking, because there's a big addition going on the side of Kroger's right now that took away parking. Well, the ordinance says, and I'm sorry, I can't go directly to it, but what it says is, if you expand a building and you diminish parking, and then there's a conflict between landscaping and parking, parking rules.
Well...
So, that's why Kroger's didn't have to retrofit...
The parking lot.
The parking lot. They are going to do some plantings in, at the recommendation of Tree Commission, areas that are already reserved. And there's a large grass area between the back of the store and the bike path where the Tree Commission's recommended that they plant.
Which I never see, because I go in the front, and it's terrible in the front. Well, the front, if that's landscaping in the front, I use, you know, come on. I like the Beacon School landscaping better.
Kroger's is an example of where a building was expanded and there was, you know, need for building square footage, need for parking, and need for landscaping. And in the hierarchy, trees are at the bottom of those three. So, the Tree Commission, you know...
Wants to make it, well, I understand that, I think.
But anyway, that's when that revision took place, and now the Tree Commission's looking to go through some additional, possible revisions at that last council.
Every time you tinker with something, you fix one thing and then you don't realize you've messed up something else. Well, it's true. But, I think, don't we agree that, on this, that...
You do have a letter to, to the Planning Commission from Jody Harris, Representative Beacon School, and so what happened and why they needed the parking. And the school itself, to my understanding, is not traditional in what would be considered to be a student-teacher ratio.
That's right, that's right.
Because you've got quite a few more teachers necessary per student, and so, you know, they should, actually, they should switch parking with Morrison, I guess, because really, they need more. They need more staff parking.
Than Morrison does.
Than Morrison. And, you know, if it's not a high school where students are driving, they, you don't have to have parking for students. So, really, you're looking for staff parking, and I think really that's what they're trying to do here, is make sure they have enough room at least for staff, because they have been parking in the cat box evidently for a while.
Some of the things we have to watch for when we talk about the impacts on retrofitting buildings and when people attempt to do renovation, is we don't want to make it, create such a disincentive to renovation that they decide, well, it's going to be more effective for me to go build a new building, and then we generate another empty building. So, we, you know, we want to keep incentives in place for people to renovate as opposed to generate new buildings.
Right. One of the, I guess, Phase Two of the Landscape Ordinance's first revision included what some things that Mr. Hazel was talking about, because previously it said if you couldn't meet the requirements, you had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's what the original language said. And the board was just granting variances, because they looked at the lots and said, there isn't anything you can do. There's no room to do all this, variance granted. Well, what happens now is the Tree Commission has to work with the developer to come up with some alternative landscaping, if possible. So, it, the ordinance says, if the site plan, if the site is so confined that the strict requirements can't be met, the Tree Commission grants consolidation approvals, and they do that quite a bit. So, I think it's a good balance between, we're not just going to let you not do anything, but we're going to try to work with you to get the best we can. The trees that we'd like to see to shade cars and shade lots and keep temperatures down and, you know, create habitat, tree canopy, but we also want you to be able to use your land, improve your land, add greater value to your land. So, that's been working out pretty well. Come to Tree Commission tonight if you want, 7 o'clock.
We'll still be here.
That's right.
We're doing pretty good.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Speak for yourself.
We have a lot of stuff left on here.
I guess, actually, the ordinance doesn't apply. Right?
Right, right.
Thank you very much.
Well, I thought it looked very nice out there.
No explanation needed.
Does it need a motion or anything?
No.
Okay, zoning designation for annexation requests, David Funk, that Door Lane thing, or where's he on Door Lane, back there, or Door, and holds their clinic.
We have to go to public meetings for this?
Public meetings for a zoning designation?
Yeah.
I thought so.
So, we have...
It's scheduled.
Okay, but, wait, what are happening, that other parking, parking public hearing we were supposed to have? Remember, we were supposed to have two, and we only had one? Did we ever, we didn't ever do anything about that, did we?
The street parking.
No, that, we had, I thought we were having two public hearings, that one, we had the public hearing back, whenever that was, on the 16th, and they were both about parking. One was the people charging for parking, and the other one was the 500...
Oh, 500 foot.
And we only, we got confused, and only one was publicized, so the other one is still hanging up there someplace, isn't it? But I don't know where it stands.
Do we need to schedule it again?
We need three, I didn't know that public, there's public hearings, I'm just saying.
I think.
The second part, these two are the parts.
Yeah.
You can schedule a public hearing for both the zoning things and the parking and the parking garage section if it hasn't been done.
Yeah, well, that's, well, that's, well, I don't think we did. Remember, Melissa, we talked about it, but I think everybody was gone, and we were trying to get the, we got to schedule or something, so we need to do that. Three things. Okay. And then we have consideration of site review title 41 changes. We never got them, we were supposed to get the, when we had the discussion at the last meeting, and some of you, who was there, three of you, three? We were operating off a different set of, different, I don't know when they did that one, a different set of ordinances and items proposed, and we were supposed to get the updated one, because some of the things that you were concerned about had already been changed, and some of the things others have been concerned about had been changed.
And the version I was working off had two corrected versions.
Well, so, but we, so we didn't know what we, we were supposed to get a the version, but we don't have it, so we don't want to do that.
Counsel's office.
Tell it. Okay.
Who, I mean...
Which is one, which one is it? After I threw a fit and said I wanted page numbers, dates on every page, and who did it?
I have facts to me from Larry Payne at Chamber of Commerce yesterday, what the chamber had as what the most recent revisions are. Now, as the mayor said, clerk counsel will have those, but this is in her format, and it looks like what she's done. I can check with Debbie on the way out, make sure this is it.
Yeah, because we need to.
And then if so, I can just copy this and get it to Melissa, so you can look at it. It does have, I mean, in this version, too, it's got a lot of underlines, bold, strikeouts.
Yeah, well, see, looks more like one of them.
At least one of them.
Is there a date on it? Yesterday, I was going to rip out a phone system that upset me, because, and now to here, I'll get upset and create a scene because there's no date on something.
There's not page numbers and there's not a date. But I'll check to make sure that this is the latest.
I'm a female monk, isn't that, I think that's what I mean. Okay, because we, there's no point in us even talking about it, because...
No, they don't have, we don't know, know that it's the right one.
Yeah, okay, and we, we did, I had down here that public hearing thing.
I was the third reading for that 16 or 18 inch from the curb, and I wrote through my file, and it says amended, I didn't have the amended version.
Okay, I did that now, just tell you now, don't start packing every things. It says announcements and other business here. I have a question, other business. What weekend was it, last weekend or a couple of weekends ago? There must have been five monstrous animals on top of buildings. I thought, five monstrous animals seemed to, and one was on the ground, three, there were four on up. I thought we were trying to get rid of those animals. They can't have, be having a special celebration that often. It was Don Wood, I think, that mall, wasn't it? I think so.
I had, this summer, well, maybe it was in the springtime, I had given to you the copies of the sections about temporary advertising, but in particular the section about balloons, which are prohibited.
Well, there, it was...
But it says you can get a permit for a balloon for a special event if you apply for it, with no criteria.
Yeah, I remember, we talked about that, you know.
So...
Did he get a permit for six balloons?
No.
And I couldn't see what the special event was, other than he wants to sell cars. But there were, did anybody, did you see them, there were, there was one standing in there, then each of the buildings had a different one of those that they repeated before up on there? And I was on my way up to Kroger's, and it was a weekend, I'm sure.
Was that last, I don't think it was last week.
No, but it was a weekend, not too long ago, and there was, it was a Saturday night or a Sunday, and there was, I wasn't going to call you up and say, do something about those.
We discussed it, talked about it. You know, there's no need for any more special events.
No.
If you look into the section I showed, it doesn't, it essentially says you can have a permit to do it, so, but there was no basis for denying. However, what, what Mr. Hazel, it has instructed me to do is contact all of the car dealerships and say that no more balloons will be permitted with or without a permit, because they've exceeded any reasonable number of special events, including reasonable number of balloons. This is also going to, to include the little balloons, little helium balloons. It's going to include streamers, pennants, banners.
Windmills?
You name it.
Those are the ones that make you dizzy.
It's in the code.
Well, that day that they had all those things, there were the little balloons around, and there were stream, they had almost everything there, and I thought, you know, all I needed was fireworks or something, sparklers and the thing, but it was excessive, but...
And if you know, they usually happen on Friday afternoons, and they're down by Monday mornings, usually, but I did get a lot of complaints at the code office from people, and then Ray and I had a discussion, and so there'll be this document going out to all the car dealers. We're not going to just go to one.
No, because they're not the only ones that do it. They do the, they do a bird out on Columbus Road, isn't that Columbus Road that has the bird?
Not Superdog, he's a, he's a big dog.
Superdog, I thought it was an eagle. Who has eagles?
That's a dog.
Oh, well, I get, I get confused.
In other words, what the letter will say is you have to apply for a special balloon permit or special event permit, besides the temporary advertising section where you're allowed for events per year, up to a month for each one, and it'll just say, and if you apply, it'll be denied. There's no...
Well, that's...
After the first year, you can apply.
Right, but for this year, for '07...
They've had their special events.
With or without permit, special events have maxed out. And it's a section, and I, and I hope, too, that maybe, there seems to be some interest. I'm trying to recruit from the community like a sign ordinance task force.
Yeah, because, well...
I mean, there are a lot of people that are interested. I know the chamber is, because they passed a sign ordinance, pushed it through this group before the whole zoning code went, in '03. They got those revisions done in '01 or '02, almost a year ahead of the entire zoning code. And I'm sure the car dealerships after the next few days will be very interested in the temporary section, too.
Well, I talked to, who was it, Debbie's committee, and Debbie, is it her committee? And she, she was interested, but said they have so many other things on the agenda that... But I think, I really, truly think that there are a lot of things that need to be done about that. The other thing I had a question about, I, see, when I go out and drive around, I don't always, but today I went out and looked at things, and when I do that, I come back with my list of things. How many signs are you allowed to have up on a building or in front of a building to advertise something like Palmer Place? Have you seen the advertising?
Yes, ma'am, we've been dealing with that, too. My office has, even today, contacted, I'm trying to think what their address is. It's Hayes Cornwell LLC that owns the two properties.
14 North Court or something.
Yeah, so they were contacted today that the, the big hay wagon with the sign on it was not permitted. Even if it could be permitted, it was too large. And very quickly, it looks like they hauled the trailer away after we made contact with them. The big banners, off-site advertising, that's not permitted either, because Bob's Lot is not joined to the landmark lot, therefore that's advertising off-site. So, they said that they would, I mean, they've been notified to take the banner down, so we'll see how long that takes. Quickly, they hooked up the wagon and hauled it away.
Well, I went by about 10:30 or along in there, that's when I saw it, so.
Well, I was a little surprised yesterday to go into Attractions to have my hair done. Before I went in, I had the opportunity to sign up for Palmer Place for next year.
Yeah, the code officers also today, Ben, I had officers today down to Attractions, and they, they said the sign had to be removed from the sidewalk and couldn't even be on the property because it was off-site, real estate sign. We also stopped at the pub and had them take down a sign, three down on Mill Street, a couple Internet service... had them take down a sign, three down on Mill Street, a couple Internet service banners hanging from, from residential properties where students are either working for these companies or getting a little bit of advertising money. So, it's been a busy day at the code office for signs, a busy couple of days.
Yeah.
Really clamping down on the entrepreneurial stuff.
How about the guy walking with a sign up and down the street?
There for the pizza place.
I've, believe it or not.
It is.
That's a sign.
In my spare time while cruising the Internet, I've found some case law from Ohio where it has been found that those aren't signs.
They aren't?
No. If you've got it and you're walking with it, I mean, you see them everywhere, especially Kmart's big for it. Now, you see Kmart all the time.
Yeah.
Places. I feel sorry for those guys. They're going out of business sale.
I know.
For some reason, and I, I must have known it when I read it, but I'm not that familiar with it right now off the top of my head. But for some reason, that's not a sign.
Oh.
It can be considered some, it's more like speech than it is signage.
Oh, free speech.
Oh, the placard, expressing your opinion about something.
As long as I've got a hold of it and I'm moving, I have to be constantly moving.
And that may also have to do with picket.
Picketing.
Picketing, yeah.
Yeah, because they, they get out with signs.
Yeah, you can't stand and block it with your sign, but as long as you're moving.
Yeah. So, I mean, it, to me, it's a sign. It's, you could call it a moving sign.
All those things at the courthouse with all those rallies, Eric Sines. That's what, that's, that's where the connection is.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Right now, it's kind of an area you may not want to go toward. But obviously, freedom of speech though, speech, expression of speech and expression of, you know, two pizzas for five is not the same thing.
No, you're right. I mean.
And that's how important pizza is to me.
Well.
So, but right now.
I mean, you're advertising pizza, what it is, it's advertising.
It's pretty, right now, it's not a good area to go to on signs because there's, you know what I'm saying? There are, there are some issues that have been raised in court.
Oh, I know.
In Ohio recently, so.
Well.
Well, it's an easy transition from that to messages on T-shirts.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, okay. Well, I, just as I said, you, you don't want me to go out right before one of these meetings driving around to look at things.
Anytime you might have any questions about anything, you can call my officer, call me, email me, talk to an officer. I mean, that's not, you don't just have to hold that.
You know I wake up in four o'clock in the morning.
Email.
Send an email.
I don't do email, makes me throw up.
Were you driving around?
You might find that I'm at the office.
Were you looking around? Do you stop? You better stop or your attention isn't on you driving.
No, today I don't, I couldn't, I couldn't stop and look at houses for the Housing Authority because there were two cars right behind me, but I got, they honked at me and shook their fist and sort of like, "What are you doing, lady?" Well, you have to get out and look, you know? Okay, is there, and any, I was this, I was this citizen who was speaking about things here.
On the list of things, because you mentioned the signs.
Yeah.
Do, at one time, I thought we discussed trying to form a committee of people with the business community and maybe some neighborhood association folks, et cetera, to read the sign ordinance and make some recommendations to us.
Well, he was, that's what he was mentioning there. People are interested, but we've not done it.
We never formally.
Related that, Captain Tom Pyle and I will be going to the executive committee meeting of the neighborhood associations on the twenty-first. They want to talk about these little real estate signs.
Yeah, they're very upset about those.
And we're also going to talk about graffiti.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's.
That's free speech on the, on the twenty, on the twenty-first. So, maybe that will
raise some interest in the neighborhood associations. And maybe they're only interested in these real estate signs, but we can.
Well, I think some of them.
Get them in on the whole, the whole picture.
Some of them are, I'm the treasurer of the Near North Side Neighborhood Association, Anna. They're interested in other signs too, I think, and all that stuff too. So, I'm, I'm sure they would be willing. Each of the neighborhood associations should give, offer comment, I would think, ask them to submit what they think.
Recommendations.
Recommendations.
And it's, if it, if, I won't say anything is easy to enforce, but it has to come close to being something that you can accomplish reasonably.
Yeah.
For example, tracking real estate signs on all the properties in town to make sure that they came down one month after a lease was signed, whenever that wa, I mean, you're talking about an impossible task.
You do away with them all. You can't have that, period.
Yeah, I don't.
No problem.
You can set timelines on it.
Newspapers would like that.
Well, if they can advertise in a newspaper, they can have a brochure, a booklet that goes out, just no signs, period.
The information that I gave you regarding a state Supreme Court case, Dworkin Bernstein versus Panesville Board of Zoning Appeals, it has a lot of information on it about how you can regulate temporary signage, including real estate signs. Basically though, what you have to do is go back in and treat all of, all temporary signs in the same way. You can't discriminate. It has to be content neutral in its application. And so, but then you would do permitting for real estate signs and you'd make, say, political signs and real estate signs, and all of them have to have a permit, basically be the same size, placed in the same location. And so, there's guidance from a recent state Supreme Court case on how your ordinance should be changed. I think I gave you a copy of the Panesville ordinance, which was changed. And there's a lot of, I gave you a lot of.
You've got that signage.
And there's some constitutionality issues too. You got to watch, you don't go too far because you have to have an overriding public interest to regulate signage, you know, because there's some nuisance or harm that's going on. You can't inhibit commerce. But you, you don't have to let everything go.
Me not liking them isn't a good reason.
Well, it may be because you may have a good reason.
You have a reasonable, rational, defensible and consistent.
Well, it's, it's, I think people in the neighborhoods are, get upset because especially those of us who live in near, in near, in close, that it's, it's really adds to the slum appearance of everything it does. And speaking of slums, when are we going to take up the sofas again?
Next year.
Sofas?
Get rid of the sofas and the overstuffed furniture. Ohio State did it, Columbus did it.
I had drafted an ordinance and forwarded it on, I believe, to council. And I've copied Ray and Rick on it where, not too long ago, City of Columbus, because they'd had fires with couches and some different things also involving fatalities, unfortunately.
Yeah, they were my girls.
And the city of Columbus had passed new ordinance regarding stuffed furniture and that kind of thing. I took it, a previous recommendation that I had made, that's been years and years ago now, and ordinances from a couple of other cities, I believe Morgantown, West Virginia, because they always, couch burning is a tradition at Morgantown. And their fire department, these things were all regulated under their fire codes.
Fire, mm-hmm.
Not in their housing codes. So, I kind of took really all these fire regulations and turned them into something that could either be put in the local fire code or it could be put in the housing code. And the way it's written, it could just be inserted in the housing code. I did, I mean, I did that quite a while back.
Well, I know, but I think.
Forwarded it to council, but it never got.
Council, I, council didn't want it to, I think dragged.
As you recall, when it was originally put in the housing code in two thousand and one, it was overturned at referendum.
Yeah, mm-hmm. But if you put it, if it goes in the fire code, you look pretty bad if you overturn, try to overturn the fire code.
That's why it had a little more weight, I think, in those cities. I mean, even in a city like Morgantown, you know, it's like, you're taking away what we do. It's like, no, people are getting hurt. That's why we're doing it. We're not, for you not to have fun or celebrate a football win or loss or whatever, this is not safe.
You could incorporate it in both codes, so that both fire and code enforcement could deal with the same issue.
Because the way I wrote it, it includes a lot more than just stuffed furniture. There's quite a few other things that are prohibited from being stored any outside. There's some things you can put in a building, but if it's out in the open and it's a list of more than just couches and chairs, there's a lot more there. So, I mean, that, it's floating out there. I wrote it quite a while back.
Okay, well, tell them I won't vote for them unless they get something like that on there. Okay, do we have any other business minutes?
I do have a question.
Oh.
The last meeting, you had a public hearing on council request to, about leased parking?
Yeah.
And parking to be included in rent or, and if it was not taken, then couldn't be subleased? So, council's waiting for action.
Yeah, I forgot, I did have that on this. I had two different, I have over here, we had that public hearing on that thing. I.
Just want to remind you of that.
I have a, I had a question about that. Does that apply to, and we were in there all that and I didn't bring it up then, but when we're talking about that, how does that affect somebody who has a house and they have three people in there and they use the driveway? Do those people charge extra for that, to people to park in the driveway if it's a house with three, you know, like a mine R1, they have to have three spaces and they use the driveway or a garage? I mean, does this only apply to, everybody was talking about, I felt that all of the people who were there talking at that public hearing were talking about apartment buildings where you had more than, you know, you might have a couple of, units, three or four units or something. That was what I got out of it.
Yeah, I don't think the, I don't think the proposal differentiates between a driveway and an R1 zone and.
So, that, that people in.
Parking in apartment complex.
Do they charge? I mean, Mr. Cody was, was there and he has a place across, right across from me, which by the way, he did fix up and did a lot of work on it. This looks very nice this year. And I just wonder if he charges them for that, and I didn't bring that up.
It's, it's a difficult issue to deal with because are they charging three hundred and fifty dollars a month for rent? Or are they charging three hundred for rent and fifty for the space? I mean, it's, in some sense, it's semantics. The thing, the, the big concern is that they're, they're renting it to somebody who isn't a tenant, tenant.
Well, I would be very concerned about where I live. Of course, I hope neighborhood's almost gone now, but all of those people, if those people in those houses don't have cars, in theory then, they could rent them out to somebody else, which means I would have all kinds of people coming in, into the neighborhood, walking in with, you know, a group of people just to get their car or to park their car and that sort of thing. So, you know, and, but the people who live there may not have a car, so are they allowed to have three more people rent that space?
No, I'd say the ordinance says that they can't. They can't do that.
So, they're just sitting empty.
Right, they sit empty.
Sitting empty, well.
What does it hap, what does it say now?
It doesn't.
Well, no.
It just says that the owner.
Has to provide.
Has to provide.
Provide.
A minimum of two spaces per unit.
Yep, or one for each permitted occupant. Can be stacked in R1 and R2.
A minimum of two.
Minimum of two per unit.
So, that, you have a couple of different situations here. One is where you build one-bedroom apartments like River Park Towers did, they have two hundred and forty parking spaces for one hundred and twenty one-bedroom inefficiency units. And so, what they do is they lease additional parking to people living on the east green primarily.
They met the requirement.
To do that.
Met the requirement.
Spacing. The other option, opposite end of the spectrum to me is the grandfather, that's probably the easiest to relate to, is rooming houses, also known as fraternities and sororities. Very few of them have enough parking spaces for their total occupants.
They don't have any.
But let's say you do have eight and you house sixteen students. Well, you can't charge for the parking, but who gets the six, who gets the eight spaces? You know, in the past, the groups of seniority.
Well, I can tell you what sororities would do, but I don't know what fraternity would do.
Right, I think it's.
They fence it in like the.
No, we would let, we would give it as a prize to somebody like the president for all the hard work, would have that spot, the house mother would have a spot, and there'd be one for me when I go over there to yell at them, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, but I'm saying.
But that, but I can, the bigger places that have the.
Well, I know you got.
Lot of parking. But, you know, I, I can, I can see if you have this big thing, like the lady who has a place behind the shops there on Court Street, for you, ever, she, when she bought the place, they were, people, the businesses were renting some of those spots. And I, that to me is not a bad idea, but it's, but I don't like the idea if it applies to a private home next door to me, where are they going to rent those out and I'm going to have double the number of students running around at night?
Well, they might now and no one knows.
Well, I, I know right now.
But if this is passed, they won't be able to. But then we'll have to go up to every, we'll have to go to every unit, make contact and say, is this person who lives here, is that your car?
Yeah.
So, we'll identify, we'll be able, we'll have met every person and met every car in order to.
It's just, it's just, it's mind-boggling when you sit down and try to think about it.
If you look at it from the point of view of a student who doesn't have a car, who has paid.
The money.
The money, then, why can't that student sublet it?
Right, yeah.
I don't know.
Makes, it's fair.
Except that, as I said, from my point of view, I, that's going to be adding, and they, you know, they get their cars at really odd times. They don't use them during the daytime. It's usually at two o'clock in the morning or so and they all come.
It'd be the same thing if they live across from you.
Well, but then I'm going to have, I'm going to have, I, right now across, they don't all have cars. So, what's going to happen is that they would rent them out. And so, I'm going to have more people doing that than I would have had in the first place.
Well, do we have to have this?
Right now, there's a restriction. It's only within the landlord's lease. That's because what's, what's, what Gary said in his letter was unless there's a statutory restriction, then the, in essence, the, unless, the absence of restrictions there around by the parties or of a statutory prohibition. Well, as a landlord, you could put a restriction on the, in your lease and say, you cannot sublease your parking spot or your, or the, or your room. Or you can allow them to do it. I mean, it's, it's.
Not to, yeah.
And what's, but what's happening is probably some of the cases, you can read the newspaper ads, you can pretty well track it, like University Courtyard says in their advertising, free parking spot, you know, included with, included. Lakeview, on the other hand, you rent your apartment and you rent your space.
Well, they don't have enough for everybody, do they, at Lakeview?
I don't know.
I think. It used to be there wasn't.
But their grandfather, because they're free, none of the ordinance, but yeah, you do, do that practice there.
Well, we need to have.
We don't know, other newspaper ads, who does which.
We need to have this on the agenda for the next meeting then to give council a response now that we've had the public hearing.
Right, I think you probably should.
They probably thought we would do it today, but since.
Well, it's not on the agenda.
No. Yeah, so, so we have to do.
If we have that other public hearing, is it enough notice to have the other parking public hearing before the next planning condition, two weeks?
Well, we'd have to have three, three public hearings at the same time. We thought we would.
Start it up.
Well, you, how much time is it?
Well, this is Thursday, I think. The paper wants the legal ad by, which is already packed.
To go out on Sunday, so it's three days ahead.
And that's not adequate, I don't think.
And don't you have to have?
I can say, meeting after next.
Mm. The next meeting might just too close.
We can't get it in this Sunday, it's what we're saying.
Okay, well.
So.
So, then it may have to be the fourth of October, which is going to be on for.
I don't know about you.
It's right there. It's thirty days, so you're.
That's close.
A month away. It won't even be, it'll actually, it sounds like it'll have to be your second meeting in October.
For the public hearings?
Yeah, because you have to have a thirty-day prior notice in the newspaper. And they need, on top of thirty, they need, like Melissa said, three or four days lead time. Like for zoning board things, I have to buy, by Wednesday at one o'clock, that's my drop-dead time for a Friday publication. So, in general, you're talking three days.
Thirty days from next.
Yeah, so council probably ought to do the same thing since both of these zoning issues came, their time period, because their annexations came within August, I thought, because if they never were, both of these filed early June, then they have to be sixty days there. Then it has to lay on the table, what's the drop-dead date that the council action has to be by to actually do the final annexation? We need to find that out from the clerk, because they may, we may have to tell them that because of our not doing the legal ad, we can or cannot, they may have to run their public hearing before they would get a zoning recommendation from us.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because your timeline might be too short in relationship to the state law regulating the annexation process.
Right, because that did happen in one case on Columbus.
It did.
They got outside of it and it was not accepted and they've never been annexed. They got theirs over. They got their shore.
Because our second would be the 18th of October, so we would have to then.
Well, I'll check with Debbie to see if this is the right.
See what she has to say. Okay. All right, did you have anything else? No, you have nothing else. Okay. And it's, Jim Cody's name is spelled wrong in here.
Uh-oh.
Couple places, C-O-A-D-Y, not C-O-D-Y. And somebody else's name was, but, oh, Larry Payne, he had a Y left out in one spot.
Oh, Windowpane.
Yeah. The Y was left out under, right when he says he was attending the meeting, the Y, but the next place, it isn't left out.
That's his paper.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew you knew that. Okay. We need a motion.
Yeah.
You've, it has to be, one of you two gentlemen has to do it.
Will we accept the minutes with the revisions, as mentioned? I'll second.
Okay, Ellen, favor seat. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 4:24. Because who moved to adjourn? Somebody moved it.